We'll start with the Pledge Allegiance if you're in line standing.
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we've been meeting in closed session and on our report out from, from the items that were discussed, item three point one, conference with labor negotiator, no actions taken. Item three dot two, personnel, discipline dismissal release, no item, no action was taken. And item three dot three, performance evaluation for superintendent. Will be adjourned after our open session to closed session again to have that conversation. So, no, obviously, no, no, no actions taken. So Damian, our president, is out today, so you're stuck with me. And I am still learning the formalities of running one of these meetings, so you'll have to bear with me as I stumble through this. I already forgot roll call, so we're off to a good start. Okay, so. Oh, okay, so we are missing two people, both are out sick. Damian Armitage, the president, as well as April Nettos are both unavailable tonight, so thank you for that. Okay, so we will move on to the consent agenda items dot five point one. Let's see here, the little thing that needs to be read out for that, I don't believe there is. Do you want to pull them?
I don't want to pull them.
Okay.
I just, if there's clarification. The five point ten and five point eleven, the agreements with bus transportation. I know that our athletic departments are paying for that, is C I F reimbursing them?
No.
What?
No.
Oh, I would sure like to.
No why?
No why, because they used to, and they're making all of the money and nobody knows. C I F, yes?
Yeah. See, C I F doesn't pay for those for our buses, however, when we go to, when we go to playoff games, they reimburse us, I believe it's at three dollars a mile or six dollars a mile. And so that does come back, so we get some backups only for playoff games. So that begins to be what they did recently. But regular season and preseason, that's not reimbursed by C I F.
Yeah, because I know we used to say custodian, everything that we could possibly write off and bill at C I F. So that's good to know, that we are being somewhere for playoffs.
That's the same issue for both items, right? Because they were two separate items.
Yes.
Okay, so for the good of the public, all the items in the consent agenda will be approved by a single motion, which is not debatable and requires unanimous vote of passage. Since none of the members have items they would like to pull, I'll go ahead and, is that roll call for here or no? That's just, oh, okay, so we'll call for a roll call then. I'll, I'll take a motion.
You're making a motion, I'll second the consent agenda.
Okay, so I have moved and seconded, let's go ahead with the roll call then.
You made the motion?
Yep.
Did I, yeah? Then you said, yeah.
Okay, Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Ms. Freiman?
Yes.
And Mr. Price?
Yes.
Thank you.
We'll give you some reading.
I appreciate that. You're so kind. Okay, so we'll move on to section six, communications and reports. And we'll start with communication from the public on items that are not on the agenda. So this portion of the meeting is set aside for the public to address the board on items that are not on any specific agenda item. You can find yellow cards if you wish to make comments at the beginning or beginning, at the opening, at the opening of the, at the door? Just a door. It's just a door. Please fill those out and turn them into Maria. Each speaker has three minutes and the board will hear any single issue no longer than 20 minutes. So having said that, I have two items or two speakers and I'll start with Maureen Henkelman. Am I saying that right?
Yes. Hi. Okay, I just wanted to talk to you still about dyslexia, came a few months, a few weeks ago, a few meetings ago. Early identification and early intervention is key. Kindergarten and first grade are deemed to be the window of opportunity to prevent long-term reading problems. Without early intervention, the reading gap between struggling readers and their peers continues to widen over time. In my daughter's case, she has dyslexia and she showed signs of this at a very early age. She was in the Lincoln Western Foster Unified School District Language Intensive Preschool Program. And she even had an S L P in that program that said, when she was about four, four and a half, could she have dyslexia? She is, my daughter's been on an I E P since she was three years old. She's now 10 years old, so this has been quite a journey for us. From the time she was four and a half years onward, we repeatedly asked and brought up dyslexia as our concern in every I E P meeting. We were told she's way too young. As she got older, the district said she has A D H D-like symptoms. I've heard the same story from other parents whose kids have dyslexia. They try to say that it's A D H D when it's truly not. From my experience with the, with my daughter and the district, the district personnel are not trained, nor do they have the tools required to identify dyslexia early or at all. It is so important for the district to acquire these tools and training for their personnel to spot and identify dyslexia in their students, especially since 20% of the population has dyslexia. If the district does in fact have tools, then the tools are not working, as they did not work for my daughter. Not only does the district need the tools to identify dyslexia, but they need a strong program that provides direct, systematic, evidence-based instruction in reading, oral language, and written expressions such as Wilson and or Barton. Many children who have dyslexia also have dyscalculia and dysgraphia. My daughter has those as well. I would love to see our district set up a collaborative working group with the parents and district personnel to work together to determine a strong tool to identify not only dyslexia, but dyscalculia and dysgraphia as well. In addition, I would love this group to research and select strong curriculum for dyslexia and dyscalculia. Dyscalculia, dyslexia is a superpower. They have so many strengths and these kiddos are not dumb. They are very smart, they are great out-of-the-box thinkers, and I would love to see the district be a great out-of-the-box thinker and provide these kiddos with the resources so they can soar and take off and work to their maximum potential. Again, I'm asking to have this brought up as a topic on the board agenda and that a collaborative working group can be put in place so we can work to help these kiddos survive and succeed.
Thank you. Krista Kaimets?
Hi. Okay, so I'm Krista Kaimets and I'm a parent of three. I have two students in the Lincoln District and my homeschool one. So I learned that I had dyslexia in my 40s, so talking about early detection. So when my son was diagnosed through outside testing, we had already done S S Ts and lots of meetings and they were telling us that he had A D H D also. So we went outside and we got testing diagnosis and accommodations and got him set with a 504. And he was always a great reader and he knew all, you know, like he's still a great reader. So it just, it's such a difficult thing to, to put your finger on. But I'm here as a concerned parent and an advocate for dyslexics for current and future generations. And tonight, I'm asking the district office to support and invest in teacher and staff training and education around dyslexia as a neurodiverse learning style and to help our district understand the benefits that dyslexics bring, and how to engage our strengths. So statistically, some of you may have dyslexia and not know it. You likely have a family member with dyslexia and of some type, because there are actually multiples or more than three that are identified in the U S. And like Maureen says, one in five people is dyslexic. So because of deeply rooted genetics, according to Justin Garson, Ph.D., his research, it introduced through Psychological Psychology Today Magazine, July 25th of 2022, Minds Have Evolved to Help Survival, and I'm going to read some of his article here. The core idea is that human beings were designed by evolution to have different, I'll put these on, different cognitive skills, skills that complement one another to enhance group survival. Think about termites in a colony. They look and have, behave quite differently, fighters, breeders, and workers, but their differences make a colony thrive. In today's view, human minds work in a similar way. Human societies have all, excuse me, all face the same challenges to acquire the information and resources they need to survive and thrive. That too is important for different people to use different cognitive strategies. Running out of time, so to wrap up, we are missing the gifts and talents of 20% of students as they continue to be square pegs shoved into round holes rather than appreciating their differences in skills. Other kids lose their self-esteem every day, or our kids lose their self-esteem every day, that they feel less than, that they do not belong, or they feel stupid and on top of that another day. And what we are asking for today is for the district to approve an investment at the school level and neurodiversity training focused on dyslexia. And we have a resource, we have access to teacher staff training locally through Mandan Strategies. And my hope is that our district takes the lead in acknowledging our differences and learns to support neurodiverse kids for the future. And I brought you all a book that was written by Mandan Strategies, so I think that we can have copies.
Yeah, you can leave them with Maria.
Go ahead.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, having no other comment cards, we'll move on to item six point two. That'll be report outs and we'll start with our student advisors. And so Ms. Williams, you look to be playing solo tonight, so you can, you can take more time if you're a little spread out.
So hi, I'm Clara, I'm the board representative for 12 Bridges High School. So as someone like events going on, there's a combined L H S and T B H S production of Julia Caesar this Friday and Saturday. Also, there was a lockdown on campus yesterday, which, so Lincoln Police, they alerted our principal that there was a suspect near the area. We were not in any like danger, but they still locked down the campus. But the response was handled quite well, in my opinion, between students and staff. However, some issues were posed. So firstly, parents were trying to contact their students and they weren't getting any responses because the wifi on our campus doesn't allow students and staff to use personal devices to make any sorts of contact. So parents were not hearing back to their students. And then also, most of our classrooms, they're entirely glass. And in the event of a shooter, those tend to pose a serious gap. But on a better note, we made playoffs. Football. We won our first playoff game. We lost the second one, we won the first one.
Fantastic, thank you for the update. So I'll go to, down to the board, board trustees comments, so I'll start with Chris.
Okay, I attended Lincoln High's football playoff and I'm so glad that they all got through the first game and went on the second. Unfortunately, we didn't have the results that we wanted, but that's okay. What I noticed throughout is there was never a give-up attitude from the players. They went down the very wire to fight, 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 fight. So it was, it was pretty fun to have that and to have both schools in our district be able to go that far. I'm glad they did. So yesterday, I had an interact meeting at 12 Bridges High School and it's right at lunch. And I was standing in the office and I thought, okay, it's time to walk over to the classroom that I was supposed to go to. And all of a sudden, a teacher walks out and says, get inside. I was like, what? And then she told me, and she said, I'm so sorry for yelling at you, but I, she was very nervous. But the speed of the fact that I walked from the office to that classroom and all of a sudden, within a minute, we were closed down, I was very impressed. And I was really able to sit and have a very nice conversation with the teacher and got to know her a lot better. And she also thanked me because it calmed her down, because she was very nervous about that. And that's something that we always look forward to having happen. But I was kind of glad I was there to actually see what was going on and experience that. And then I started thinking, well, what if, what if she wasn't in there? Nobody would come out and I could have been thought it was a shooter or someone on campus that shouldn't have been. You know, I had my little tag on. Anyway. I think that, yeah, and how it hap, why does it happen the way it happened? That lunch was gonna, the bell was gonna ring like in a couple of minutes and it didn't. I mean, it didn't come up to that time and all the kids weren't in class. There weren't kids out on the parking lot. I mean, it just, things fell where they were called. So that was my big awesome report.
Kristi?
All right, well, unfortunately, I didn't get to make any of the football games. But I did attend the Lincoln, the Lincoln High School parade that they had downtown when the buses went by, actually, one of the fire trucks blocked off the, one of the streets. And it was amazing. You could see these big, huge buses with the kids and on it and you could, we were videoing them and I had my Dodge Pommoms from her cheerleading, I was like, yes, I'm a cheerleader. I must have worn my, her bow, but I didn't. I know, right? But anyways, it was really good because you could see the kids with their phones videoing everybody out on the, on the streets. So it was really, that was really cool. And then last night, all of us attended the Foster County Board and Trustees Dinner in Burlesville. And our very own Chris Wyatt won the trustee of the year.
Well, it was, yes, one of them.
One of, okay. So we're very excited and proud of Chris for that, so, long time coming. Next thing I want to talk about is Saturday is the Turkey Trot for the Lincoln High School Farm. I'm very excited, I've actually called my husband in to go in with me. And I have an outfit to wear, so I'm so excited. I know, but yeah, it's a five mile, you can, they said, and you can run, you can walk, you can dance through the farm, whatever you'd like to do, so it's gonna be really fun, I love it. I'm gonna dance through the, I don't, I don't run, no, but I'm gonna dance. My husband's gonna, oh my god, my husband's gonna like be way behind me. That's all.
Okay, so I would like to go back to your comments about, and I'm sorry that that happened because it's gotta be terrifying, right? I mean, we assume the worst and despite that not being the case, I can imagine how frightening it is. I'm glad you're here to give the student perspective because it's really important that we understand that. I'll use that as a segue to some of the work that Reno Penders has done as it pertains to school safety, district-wide school safety. A lot of the concerns you have are being addressed in terms of having a wall of windows. I mean, great for aesthetics, not so much for, you know, other scenarios. And I'm not going to talk about Measure G because there was money in Measure G to cover some of the windows, but I know it's too soon, so we're not going to talk about it, and I get it. But these are some of the things that as board members and as a district, if these things are so expensive, when you think about pulling them out across our dozens of camp, well, not dozens, but more than a dozen campuses. So to speak to Chris's point about how it just seemed to work out that the kids weren't at lunch, it didn't just work out that way. The incident occurred prior to lunch, but it was Wes Collins' quick thinking to lock the campus, and I don't mean to say that that wasn't what she implied, but that was incredibly forward thinking for him to say, we need to close the campus down before we have 200 kids roaming about the cabin because that makes things exponentially harder, which again is so much the reason that S R Os are absolutely imperative to school safety. So I wanted to thank him for the forward thinking and of course, for all the staff who reacted very quickly. 70 seconds to lock down an entire high school. I, I don't know what we benchmarked before that, but I don't think it was 70 seconds. And I love that we're now putting a lot of emphasis into making sure we know how to push those buttons and how to test whether or not we're doing what we can. So thank you for sharing that, we're working hard. We've done threat assessments at almost all of our campuses and there are so many things that we have to do and only so, so many that we can afford to do, so we're prioritizing those. But you are our most important resource, I want you to know. Commodity, I don't know, it's not resource, you know what I mean, like treasure, something. I'll let you, yeah. I want to, yeah, they're all gonna be like this, just, you know. I want to say to, I, I want to shout out our superintendent because she does not live in town, but this is where she was during Veterans Day. It's not, it's not a work day. Her entire staff was gone, she took upon herself to return to our community because she sees it as her own and spend Veterans Day with us, so I appreciate that. She's leaving, she's been here 12 years. We're gonna say more about her as that time ticks closer, but it was so wonderful to see her yet again, acknowledge for her many, many, many years, not just on the board, but in education in general. And this district is looked upon as a leader in the county and it has a large part to do with her being. So yes, it does, and don't make the face, her being such a wonderful part of our process. Okay, and then lastly, and I'm running long, but nobody can gavel me now. I spent some time with, I spent some time with Jennifer Warden and the co-worker of C T instructors, who were there, and we started dialogue around how the school district could be a resource to local businesses as we build and make and fix things. And it's so exciting to think about programs like Leadership Lincoln and others where we're doing community works that we allow for our students to pour into their community. So I thought that that was fantastic. And then I do, I said it was gonna be the last one, I lied. For Ms. Henkelman, I, you spoke at our previous board meeting and just because we're not allowed to really interact with you, I did want you to know, we, we have asked for some information about the current programs we operate. If it's the pleasure of the board, we'll get a presentation by that program's lead to find out where we've set our benchmarks and if there's rooms for improvement or room for improvements, we're more than open to look into this thing. So please, just, both of you, just because we didn't reply doesn't mean we're not listening. With that, I'm going to hand it off, oh wait, so now we're gonna go to the Western Foster Teachers Association. I don't know if Josh is present, I don't see him. And then I'll go to the Classified Employee Association, Jim?
Yeah, that's the report that I.
Okay, well, I appreciate you being here. And now I will hand it off to Superintendent Cal.
So, let me see what you guys talked about. So right after our last board meeting, Kathleen Lehane, who is one of our directors in Educational Services, who is amazing presenter, she and I were able to present at Association of California School Administrators Conference down in San Diego, standing room only. It was very, very well received and so excited to get our district out there in the public. I, beyond just our own community, because there's a lot of great things that we're doing. Safety Day at Creekside Oaks occurred on November 4th, which I unfortunately was in San Diego, was not able to attend. But Quanis Club of Lincoln foothills did an amazing safety day at Creekside. They tend to rotate our schools and so Creekside is one of the schools that has not received that great day. And thank you so much to Bob Day and the Quanis Club for, for making that happen for us. Veterans Day ceremony, that was, I have to say, probably the highlight of my year. That celebration, not celebration, right, but ceremony, but celebration of, of the men and women that have served our country and are still serving our country was just incredible, like, amazing. So, and yes, I did do it on my day off and I know that I, I've, I've decided that I should tell people I sleep in Davis, but I live in Lincoln because I spend more money here and more time here and all the things. But I, I love this community and that was an amazing, amazing event. And Danny Hall, original Doobie Brother, which I love the Doobie Brothers, had no idea he was gonna be there performing and lives in Lincoln.
First I've heard that, by the way.
Yes, it was amazing, like, I, I videotaped the whole thing. It sounds like, yes, it was so good. Yeah, it was amazing, so.
Was that person in friendly in concert?
I was, yes, but it was, it was, he was, he was amazing. And, you know, all of the speakers were just, it was, it was incredible. Yeah, incredible. Trustee dinner, congratulations, Chris, you're amazing. Like, truly, just, it's gonna be hard to say goodbye to you, I mean, not that really, but I guess here. We got yet another food service grant. So Christina Lawson is yet again working through magic and so we got over $150,000, which will support us in getting a culinary manager. So kind of a skilled cook that will also kind of help manage our kitchens and support our, our folks in, you know, serving great food to our kids. And then also to beef up some of our marketing materials that specifically will make our cafeterias more inviting for kids. So we're excited about that. We talked about the lockdown, it, we are continuing and, and, well, we never want lockdowns or, you know, whether they're good, bad, or false, all that stuff. I do appreciate the opportunity to use these as growth and reflection and we, you know, we locked down the campus in 60 seconds yesterday. Wes was at Lincoln High School, he got the call, he said to one of Lincoln High School people, call T B H. They called and we were in lockdown and Reno and I were at 12 Bridges High School in probably under 10 minutes. And it was, it, it went as smooth as we, you know, could have hoped for and Lincoln PD continues to just be amazing and been working with us. And Reno Penders deserves a lot of, a lot of kudos for really leading the charge for our district. Holiday hours next week, they're closed Wednesday through Friday and we'll be open tended to. I will talk a little bit more about this when we get to policy updates, but the dressing rooming is on there, the recommendations, and I'll talk a little bit about more, but I just wanted to give you the heads up so I have an opportunity to talk about that a little bit later. And then I just want to acknowledge our board candidates with California's election process. You don't get results on election night the way that you're used to. And so I know that, you know, it's excruciating to kind of wait and see. And so I had contacted all the board candidates shortly after the election and gave a cautious congratulations to George Dykstra, who looks, at this point, I pretty confidently can say that he's likely to fill one of our vacant seats coming up. And so congratulations to you and then to Marjorie and to Joe, it's very close. And I know that there's gonna be, my understanding is that there'll be another reporting on Friday and then another one next Tuesday, and so hopefully by next Tuesday, we'll, we'll have a sense. And I'm gonna be reaching out soon regarding just some scheduling some meetings so that when we know for sure that they're already on your calendars and we can kind of begin to onboard and make sure you're feeling ready for December 20th because it'll be here before you know it. And I want to also acknowledge Marjorie for your donations of your, and I, she said, I told you I don't need to this, but I'm like, no, it's important. So Marjorie donated all of her remaining campaign funds to our district or to community. And so to Kiwanis, to Sheridan Elementary, to the California, or to the cadet corps at Lincoln High School, to 12 Bridges Football, and then to Suburb Grab. And so thank you for supporting our schools and our, our community. And then, that's all I got.
Okay, with that, we will move on to the Information to Action Discussion. And public, do you still have an opportunity to make comment on any of the items that you see listed to be discussed tonight, seven dot two or seven dot three? So if you want to make comments additionally, you can find the yellow card by the door that I was unable to say earlier. And we'll start with, we'll start with seven dot two, which is the presentation on illuminate. And I will now pass it, pass it on to the next person. Can't wait to see these handles. They're lighting. Yes, they're coming, they're coming. I'm gonna turn the lights down just a bit. There are copies of the presentation if you do want to.
There you go. All right. So the board requested, and so we're providing a presentation about Eliminate Education as a student data management system. And we use it for a lot of different things, and I'll talk about that in a minute. But what we want to talk about first is why would we even have a student data management system? What it does is it allows us to track student progress in a lot of different ways. It helps teachers, schools make informed decisions about individual students, also overall instructional needs of students. And so when we use the data that we can find that the system houses, we are able to, as a grade level group at a school or as a subject team at a high school or a middle school, they're able to look at the data utilizing the system, utilizing assessment data to be able to just have informed decisions about where's our program faulting or where's our program not as strong and where is it that it's really strong? And so how do we, how do we make those changes? So it helps really pinpoint and identify areas of need in supporting our students. It also helps to disaggregate the data into different groups and subgroups. And that also helps us to know how well we're helping all the different groups of students that we address. The other thing is that it keeps data in one location. We're able to get all this data housed in one program. So attendance data, grades, even behavior assessment data, a lot of that can all be in one system in one place. And so that's the power. And it's also the versatility and also the convenience of having a data management system. Everything's there in one spot. And so we, as you, as you know, we have our, just our general fund, LCFF fund that we, that we get from the state. Also, every district gets something called supplemental funds. We have a chunk of those funds, and those funds are specifically used to help and identify and help students that struggle in school. And so we have our low income students, our English learner students, our homeless and foster youth. We utilize those funds to help these students. And so part of what we use those funds for, we have, we have a broad range of how we use those funds. And part of it is using Eliminate. And there's really two parts to the Eliminate system. Eliminate, DNA, which I'm not sure if it stands for data analysis, but that's really what it is, is it's data analysis, so. And then EdgeaClimber is the second part. We've had DNA probably for about six years. We've had EdgeaClimber for about three. And I'll talk about both of those. And so they both do any great with Power School. So Power School helps. And as you know, Power School, for those that don't know Power School, that's our, that's our district student information system that officially tracks and is connected with state systems as far as tracks our attendance, behavior data, and all the other things that the state is now asking us to provide for them. That's kind of the official student data system that we have. And this one, again, it pulls data from the Power School, but then it allows us to use it in a more efficient way for teachers on a teacher level, so. So DNA does a lot of different things. First of all, it allows you, or it has a system where you can create an assessment. And there's different ways that you can create those assessments. You can upload them into the system. You can also just type them individually, as well as it has an assessment item bank. The item bank has already created assessment items. And then it allows you to create a test by pulling those items from the item bank and putting them into a test or an assessment. Live proctoring of assessment, that is when a teacher can watch all their students in one screen and see how they are choosing or see what they're choosing for their answers, particularly in a multiple choice test. They can do that with live proctoring. It also provides data assessment reports. Those reports are anywhere from an individual student level to a report by standard. How is your class doing by standard? How are students doing by standard? Also, how is your class answering certain questions that address a standard? And you can identify if a class struggled with a particular question on an assessment. You can look at that and see, okay, what was that asking and why did it not, why did they struggle with that?
Ask a kind of silly question. You say live proctoring, is it, I'm seeing the screen of a student who's taking an exam, not like a video of their face?
No, thank you. That's, that's a great question. What you're seeing is you're seeing kind of a grid that has all the students' names there. And then you're seeing how they're answering question, what question they're on, and if they're answering A, B, C, or D, and how they're utilizing multiple choice assessments, so. It also, our, the DNA side also, it houses attendance, grades, standardized test information. So you can have all that kind of on, on one page. And it allows you to determine how the students are doing the standardized test, the CASP test, or the S-Back. It houses that information. It also includes a grade book and has a way for you to enter information into that. And then from that grade book, it kind of shoots it over to a report card generator. The report cards, we upload it into the system, and then the grades automatically go right to the report card generator. So you can see it does a lot of different things. And it provides a lot of different services for us. So the interesting part about it is that there are two sides of DNA. So really what's effective is that it's just, it can do a lot of different things. So when you look at that, you think, wow, there's a lot of information that you can, you can disaggregate and you can pull apart and you can identify and find in the program. The assessment reports really are excellent. And they really do provide some great information that teachers can really, it can help them drive their instruction and adjustments that they need to make. The report card generator saves time for teachers. It used to be that teachers would have to print out a report card and write on it, or they would use a PDF, a fillable PDF, and that takes lots and lots of hours. So it, it conceivably saves hours of time by just, if you're doing assessments in the DNA, then it's shooting those assessments. You have to link them, but then it shoots them right to the different places on the report card. Student information is housed in one place. That's a great thing that we can just go and pull up some students individually and get all that information about attendance, grades, and all those things in their CASP, their, their S-Back scores. And then additionally, a standards-based grade book, it measures student progress for just-in-time grading. What I mean by that is that traditional grading, when you were in high school, and it's, and this is more common in elementary, this part, but when you're in high school, you, over the course of a quarter, you take five tests, you take an average of the percent of those tests, and then that's your grade. This standards-based grade book, what it does is it measures how well the student is assessing at that moment, and it weights that heavier than previous scores. So for example, if you have a fourth grade student that started out struggling in math in certain aspects or standards of math, and then by the end of that quarter or trimester, they are scoring better on those standards, it will weigh that score heavier because they're all of a sudden mastering that or they are understanding and they're developing that skill. And so it's gonna improve their grade at an exponential rate because of that. So that's, that's really kind of a neat aspect of it. There is also a challenging side of DNA. And here's the challenging side, and this is what makes this a challenging program. The grade book is not intuitive. It's very extensive. When you set up your grade book, you have to go through several pages of different things that you've got to pull down. And some grade books that, that teachers use are much more intuitive. They're, they're more straightforward. They're easy to see, easy to follow. Yeah, that makes sense, the next step. This one is not. They have their own vocabulary. You have to understand their own vocabulary. It's just not been intuitive. We have gone to great lengths to try and, and make it easier for teachers. We have spent a lot of time trying to do that. It's still difficult for teachers to navigate. It's been very challenging. Jen's smiling back there.
You're the positive folk from the back row.
Yeah, yeah, she is agreeing with me because she was, yeah, elementary school. And so the challenge with that, and, and what makes that more challenging is if, if it's hard and teachers don't want to spend the time or take the time to learn to use the grade book, then it's not, the report card generator's not gonna really help them because they're not entering and not using the grade book, so it's not feeding into the report card generator. So on the front end, when you're not using some of these features, it makes it harder to really be usable on the backend. The other thing that we just found out this year is that Eliminate is no longer supporting their grade book technology, technologically. They're not updating it. Renaissance Education, which is a, a big company that's been in education for a long time, they created, when, when, some years back, we had this STAR test that kids took. And it was kind of more of a vocabulary test, but it helped to identify what level kids are reading at. And then they would get these points, and they would have these goals, and they would read these books, and that's Renaissance Education. And all the schools had it and used to have it for a while. And in some cases, it was nice, but it didn't really fulfill the goals that we wanted. And so, but Renaissance purchased it, and Renaissance came out and said, hey, we're not gonna support the grade book. So that's not, that's gonna eventually die out because they're just not gonna support it, so. The assessment creation is complicated. It's just, again, also a lot of steps. There's a lot to it. There's a lot to navigate. There's a lot of information to pull out. And it's complicated for teachers to try and find that, that perfect question that they want to do or that, that assessment that they want to set up where they can upload it into the program. What's happening now is a lot of curriculum-based programs that we use have their own assessment creation online system. And that tends to be easier and more user-friendly. And so because of that, teachers are more readily going and using assessments from our purchased published program they're using and not creating assessments and putting them in Eliminate because it's just, it's many more steps. What happens then, and what makes that a challenge, is if they're not using the assessment creation, they're not getting the assessment reports because the data's not going into there. And again, the reports are great, and I, I love the reports, but putting an assessment in there, creating it, getting kids to log in and using it is, is clunky and it's multi-step and difficult. So it just, and the end result is at the bottom, it takes time to run the program. And one of the challenges for teachers is just taking the time, having the patience, and being able to do that when they have so many other things that they're doing. So we've had some very mixed results with Eliminate at late. And, and so that's where DNA is.
I have a couple of questions before you leave the slide.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I recall when my kids were young, we did Schoology. You still using that?
So middle and high school use the Schoology. So we do not have it at elementary school.
Elementary school is where Eliminate comes in.
Elementary is more with the grade book, yes, grade book. And the report card is where Eliminate comes in.
Okay.
Assessments advise more, though, or attempts?
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
When they no longer support the grade book, what then? Do we have to move or migrate to a different system just for the use of the grade book? Or does all of the assessment components have to move as well?
So let me, I'm gonna answer that question. I apologize. Now, that's okay, it's a great question. You're, you're.
And then the only other thing I had was if students are now using the publisher-based learning management systems that come with a test, how, how has the data from those assessments migrated into something that's great? Are you gonna answer that, too?
I, I am, yes. I will answer, I'll talk a little bit about that.
Fair enough. Yeah, that's all.
That's all right. No, those are good questions. Hopefully I'll answer.
Forming up the crowd.
Yeah, yes, you are, you are. So the other side of it is EdgeaClimber. EdgeaClimber is a newer program. And EdgeaClimber is used mostly by administrators and support staff. EdgeaClimber does a lot of good things, and we are, we are learning more about it. And we are developing a deeper understanding of what it can do. And we are working through this, this side of Eliminate. So what it does, the first thing that EdgeaClimber does is it houses behavior data, and it provides reports to help make improvements in our behavior. And so I'll give you an example of that. Most, when we, when we put suspension data in Power School and we put some other behavior data in Power School, it just, it lists by student, hey, this is, this is what's going on with the student. So we have that information. In EdgeaClimber, what it does is it houses the behavior data in such a way that we can get reports, and those reports are much more user-friendly. The reports can give us information about where our behavior incidents is happening on campus. And so where do we see a frequency of, of these issues that are, that are occurring? What time of day are they occurring? So when? So we can say, you know what, during lunch out on the playground, there's a lot going on during the older kids' lunch. And so we need to look at that, and how do we adjust and how do we support that? It also provides reports on students and identifies students that are having a lot of behavior challenges so that as a committee at a school, you can look at those and say, you know what? These seven students really are high flyers as far as we're seeing a lot of frequent behavior incidences. So we are going to provide tiers of support. And we're gonna add some additional support for these specific students, and we're gonna help them to, to just help them and, and build some relationships and help them as they struggle with their behaviors. We're gonna add more tiers of support for them. So it, it gives us a lot of data that can really be useful and help to, to cut down on behaviors and help really to, to kind of just calm things down on a campus. It's not happening. So it's really, it's really a great program. There's another one that was, that was pretty popular that was being used all by itself. And EdgeaClimber kind of has mimicked that one. And I've used that other one when I was a principal, and it was very effective. And we used it in a way that really helped us to target. And really, you, you don't have to wait now with kids. You can really see the data and go, you know what? We need to, we need to reach out to those five kids and help them out and talk with the parents, give them additional supports on campus. And you can really be more proactive to do that. So that's the behavior side of, of the data and how it helps us. It tracks interventions for students as well. Behavior academic, it kind of houses and allows us to record how are, how are we supporting students that are struggling academically or behaviorally or socially, emotionally? It allows us to kind of track and see where these students are. It does provide some reports for student scores. So we do upload some of those things. And, and so you mentioned about the scores and the published assessments. Some programs play nice together, and some programs we can upload into EdgeaClimber. For example, our iReady scores that we have for a diagnostic test that we give three times a year, that allows us to really put in on the skills and where students are struggling. iReady uploads and works with EdgeaClimber. Some others, as we purchase new programs, we have to kind of wait and see, see how that works and work with them.
The programs that you're referring to, like published texts?
Published texts, like, for example, we have, for, for language arts in elementary school, we use Benchmark Advance. In middle school, we have Study Scene. And so it, it, it allows some of those programs from those companies to do, do upload into EdgeaClimber. We can get that information, so. And so we are, right now, I would say, we're focusing mostly on elementary and working to expand it to middle and high school. So we're not sure yet how it interfaces with the high school programs. But our goal is to have that data, give us some information on reports of how, how students are doing. It also has tools to help schedule meetings, upload documents, kind of track the meetings and be able to provide that report of, okay, when have we met on this student, when's our next meeting? We are just beginning to really tap in and look into those, that side of EdgeaClimber. That's kind of the last part or one of the last parts of what, what we're doing and how we're using that, so. You can upload SST forms, you can upload other forms in there. So you can, 504 forms as well, you can, you can utilize that. So we're looking into how we can house all that in one place and use EdgeaClimber for that. And again, this is used mostly by administrators and support staff. It's not necessarily teachers, but it does provide information for teachers, so. Not as extensive as DNA, but it does provide a pretty robust amount of information for each student, so. And EdgeaClimber, we started really in the 2019, 2020 school year, which was the pandemic year. So it's been a slower rollout for this because of the pandemic and trying to get going. And we're continually doing trainings. We've had some earlier this year, we've had some of these last year. We have some work coming on later on this year. So we're just continuing to, to train and, and develop the use of that and the expertise for, for staff and science, so. That's EdgeaClimber. And so the question then is, what are our future plans for a student data management system? So we're gonna continue to address and use EdgeaClimber and, and hope that that really is gonna respond to the needs that we have. That was a, just, EdgeaClimber was actually created by a psychologist in Minnesota and her husband. And that, Eliminate picked it up and grabbed it and said, hey, we like this, we're gonna use it. So that's how we got it through Eliminate. But it's, so far, we're cautiously optimistic, I would say, in using it. The other thing that we're doing, though, to be, to be very honest, is that we're exploring some other options about the other side for the DNA side of things. Because of the difficulty of the grade book and using the grade book, because of creating assessments. Because of the difficulty of the gradebook and using the gradebook, because of creating assessments, that, that's made it really challenging for teachers. There's, there's other programs out there that other, other teachers are using, but it doesn't really house everything that we need in one place. It doesn't house all the data, it doesn't bring in all the stuff from Power School, the grades, the, the cast tests, and all those things. So, we're, we're going to be exploring and looking into a program that allows us to, to house all of those things. And so that's, that's the other options, and we're starting to kind of look into that. And we'll be continuing that process the remainder of this year. And so the key is, we're finding a system that's more intuitive. Because I don't know that, quite honestly, Eliminate's going to be more intuitive. I don't know if Renaissance is going to do anything with this and what they're going to do with it. They purchased it last summer, and so we're not sure where they're going with that. But we, it needs to be more intuitive for teachers, it needs to save time. Teachers have to see it as a time-saving implement so that it helps them. And again, part of that saving time, they can either create an assessment in Eliminate or use one from a published program now that has an assessment side of it that they didn't always have before. And that's, those tend to be easier now than, than Eliminate. And so that's why teachers are, are using, not using Eliminate, using their published programs as far as providing assessments. And then it needs to provide the needed information. It needs to provide and house everything that we need, which is, again, attendance and behavior and state test scores and our diagnostic from iReady. All of those things, we want kind of a one-stop shop. So that's, that's the, the happy and sad side of Eliminate, I should say, the challenging side. And we've, 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 we've spent some time on it. It's just been a challenge, and it has not really borne the fruit that we wanted.
Any questions from the board?
Just a comment. When you were first talking about it, it was like, oh, this is really cool. Because I remember back as a counselor, having to look at this piece of paper, and this, and this, and this, and try and bring it all together to make sense to sit down with a parent and a student. And sometimes you didn't get there because school is done. But, and I thought, well, this could be really great, especially if they can bring all that information together. So hopefully, it'll come together and be very useful.
The, the side, the side for secondary that holds, you know, where, where Power School uploads grades and attendance and state test scores and all of that into Eliminate, that part of it just itself works pretty good. And I know that that's used when they have a student who's struggling, and, and a team needs to sit down with a parent and a student and say, okay, let's sit down and talk about this, you are struggling in your grades. How, how can we do that? And so, that part of it has been useful and has been, it needs to be used quite frequently. It's just all the other sides of it that are wrong.
Any questions? I have questions because I'm a nerd.
Okay.
It feels like this is a little bit like healthcare, a lot of different systems, and that'll do all the things. And so, some questions I had first was, if, if I'm using a specific publisher's science book, and I want to aggregate tests and hand those out to my students because the stuff that would otherwise be in Eliminate isn't, maybe, you know, I don't want to use that. So what happens then? Do I have to manually input the scores from those quizzes into, into the Eliminate system? Because I have to take that in a publisher's LMS? Is that how that works?
Yeah, so, yeah, so they, they don't, they don't always integrate. Some of them, some of them do integrate with Edge Climb. We're finding some, but we're, we're still discovering that process. So what they would have to do, I'll, I'll give you an example of that. When there's, there's a first grade team on one of the elementary schools that I've worked along with in, in previous years, and they would have to get the test, they would have to aggregate it by standard and how the kids did by standard. Then they would have to go in, and they would enter the data into the assessment system. And, and we kind of found a backend of not giving the assessment because they didn't want to do that, because it was first graders. Part of it was, first graders struggle with technology and doing that. But they would, they would enter it in the system, and it took, it just took a lot of time for them to do that. And we worked, walked them through it. And so after, it's, it's, it took quite a while for them to get that down. And once they did, they enter it in there, they have to go through all these steps. And then that will feed into the gradebook, and then that will feed into the report card. But it takes manually entry to data, and that's the hard part, and that's the time that we want to try and save.
Are there systems currently that will take a student from elementary through secondary and encompass scores so you can find progress? Because it seems like you would almost have to translate what was done first in elementary into wherever they're going to start in secondary school. So is there, is there no system that kind of draws the line for them from where they started?
You know, there's, there is, there's, an example is Schoology does have an elementary side of it, which we haven't really looked at yet, but that's one of the programs we'll look at. The nice part about Schoology is that it is our middle and high school system that we use. But we'll see. But if it does, we want it to do all of those things that we'd love to be able to have come together to create or upload assessments, be able to give an assessment through Schoology, and then be able to have data and reports and information.
And for the good of those listening, thanks for this. I believe this was me that asked for this presentation. It was really a fiscal conversation. That's a lot of money. What's that? So I appreciate you walking me through this because I think it's helping, walking all of us through. Because it's helpful to understand, these are likely the tools that facilitate the education that it is we're here to do. Do you hear any rumblings in the community about a standardization of some sort of like, at least data storage and data format so that you can? Or is it just, everybody's got their own kind of pie?
You're talking about as far as?
Just as like, because I think of it as, there's a system, and then there's the data that it creates, right? The aggregated data of a student plus their attendance, plus the scores, plus the trends of how they've advanced throughout it. So I see the data as its own separate element, and when you change systems, you have to go, well, what about all this data that we have, that we've aggregated about a student's progress? Like, do you hear anything about, hey, let's standardize the dataset, and then we can change applications as needed? Or does every application, like Schoology has a way it saves its data, Eliminate has a way it saves its data? I mean, do you have any sense of where the?
It's not where you want it to go.
Yeah.
Every publisher, every textbook publisher has their own thing. They want to use their system. Eliminate can incorporate all those, but like Scott said, you have to do it manually.
Wow.
And if you do it manually, you might lose all the functionality of the reports on, on standards. And if you just do the score, you get scores, but you don't know which standard they go on, so it's.
Eliminate can do a lot, and they have a lot of different ways that you can create assessments. Just the problem is, it's, it's just, it takes a while to learn that. And, and it's, if teachers aren't tech savvy also, it just becomes, they've been frustrated. And that's kind of what's happened, so.
I can, you know, thank you for doing that.
Sure.
Yeah. Anything else? So, hey.
Are we allowed to ask questions?
I don't mind. Go ahead.
Okay, yeah. As a parent, I love Schoology. So much better than when I had to go through, through Power School to see my daughters. And my older ones too, their grades before. I just sat down with the principal of Atlas last week, and he pulled it up on his end, and the administrator's end. I could see everything. I like it. I mean, if elementary could do it, I, I think as a parent it would be easier on them too to be able to access their child's information because, since she has integrated over to the middle and high school, I love the Schoology program so much better. Just my opinion.
Yeah.
Good one.
We definitely, we will look into that.
You should run the school board.
I do. I tried.
Yes.
I had a question too, with regards to what you're already committing collecting with the grant systems. In that, is there a way, you said that they are, you're able to find the behaviors, like see what their behaviors are, and track SSTs? And then correlate like their grades and see how they're doing, and see if they're having issues, or if their iReady testing, or if they're, you know, or going like this is dyslexia, you know, would be very helpful across the board to be able to track, okay, this child is really having a hard time during math. And is the teacher saying he has ADHD and he's not paying attention? Well, maybe he has this type of blood or some other learning preference. And being able to see that across the board, and, or even see like, this percentage of students is having this issue, or it seems like something's poorly. So to be able to utilize that information and track learning differences is beneficial. It's that something that.
It, it can, it can certainly show trends in some of the skills where kids are struggling in certain grade levels. And then that can be a red flag to say, okay, what, what is this showing? It, it does, the, the reports, the assessment reports will show you these groups of kids and how they're doing, and these groups of kids and how they're doing it. And it helps you identify which students are specifically struggling with certain, certain standards and, and certain skills. So it does, it does allow that on some levels, yeah. So we would, and the more, so the more we could do that, we would love to have a system that could really, that's really powerful, that could do all those things. And to some degree, Eliminate can do that. Again, it's just not.
It's just starting it.
Yes.
To try to correlate the behaviors with the, you know, challenges because, you know, that's.
With the academic challenges.
Yeah.
Yes.
With the behavior challenges.
Yes.
Just, you know, like, won't go in person and stuff, but it's, it's, there are red flags all over that aren't necessarily correlated between teachers or between staff. So they're not getting the full picture, which would be something that would be really helpful for, you know, an SST or.
Sure, sure. Yeah, you could, you could see, you could bring up that data though on both sides. And, and certainly, we would, we would want to have all that as well. Yeah.
So what, did you have?
I was just going to say that to your question or your comment about that. But I feel like another tool that we use, it's not digital, but basically we have these MTSS teams, where teachers and teams are kind of looking at data and trying to look for those kinds of trends and figure out how to support students. At high school, where I work, we're kind of starting that process, but some of the elementary systems kind of face that. So, I mean, I feel like this is the kind of data that some of the MTSS teams are using.
Yeah.
Right, when they're kind of valuing the trends and then for how to support students.
Yeah, and MTSS is just, it's multiple tiers of support for a student. So you're looking at how well are the kids just understanding general instruction? This is just kind of your just basic instruction. And then identifying of that group, what, you know, what, what students need, another tier of support. And how do we provide that support? And we look at them through behavior, academics, and through social and emotional learning as well. And so, and then that's usually kind of a small group support. And then tier three is kind of our one-on-one support when we can provide that. That's really challenging sometimes. But then identifying if a child's not responding in that tier two, how do we help them in tier three? And how do we work with them to do that? So that's part of what these structures that we are building. And, and again, not that we're blaming everything on COVID, that that kind of slowed us down, but we're, that's a, that's one of our big initiatives that we have with our principals that we've worked with them on is, part of it is how we're providing and setting up and building these structures where we're giving multiple tiers of support, so.
All right. Anything else? Thank you guys, Scott. Okay, with that, maybe you turn the lights back up?
Yeah.
So that we don't fall asleep.
I'm, you know, it's too early here.
Oh, you're not falling asleep. That's good. So I'll move on to item 7.3, adoption of revised new exhibits, policies, regulations. And I will hand it to.
So this is standard item that we have at pretty much all of our, our meetings, but I will add this evening in recommendations for approval is that the administrative regulation 5132 that you have before you this evening, addressing grooming, the recommendations that are in, in the packet for the board consideration, it comes from the collaborative members of this one. And Ariana Nolan or Dolan, our student board rep. And then Ella Lane was one of the students at Tobleridge's Middle School. And then her mother also joined us as part of that collaborative conversation. And then Ariana had done some survey stuff at Lincoln High School, and so we came together. Ultimately, what we, we kind of agreed within our small group is that it really is less about our board policies and our ARs. It's more about how school sites are interpreting some of the language and then implementing the practices at the school sites. And so, we, we've already talked in our principal meetings about some certain things. You know, for example, our board policy says that we will not, our, our policy will not, our practices will not discriminate against any one group. While our data is showing that girls are absolutely being dress coded more than any other group, right? It also indicates that we will not be utilizing or disrupting instructional time to deal with dress code issues. Yet students were being sent off to class regularly and missing instruction time, right? And so we've started to address that in terms of just our practices at the school sites. But the recommendations around just some of the basic stuff like, you know, I, I'm wearing a top that is covering my abdomen, but if I raise my hand, now my abdomen shows briefly, right? Or, or I'm wearing a top and it's covering my bra for the most part, but maybe the strap is shown, right? And so is that, is that really an issue? And so the recommendations that are for board consideration this evening basically just address that, that clothes shall be sufficient to generally conceal undergarments and abdomens. So we don't want bare abdomens, and it should generally conceal it. But if there's a little bit of skin showing, it's probably not the end of the world. And, and, and so that's that piece. And then the other one that we discovered is that in our administrative regulation, that it indicates that there will not be any hats, caps, or other head coverings worn indoors. And we have not been consistently implementing that at our school sites. And in talking with our admin, that is not something that they felt strongly should be a, like if schools so choose to say, right, that in this classroom, you know, I know that the biggest concern is like if kids are putting things on and kind of hiding, that can be concerning, but wearing a hat, and some schools allow hats, but certain hats, no, because they don't want to have like rivalries. So it's like, I know Glen Edwards Middle School hats are allowed, but it has to be a Glen Edwards Middle School hat. Or no, nothing on it, just a solid colored hat, just to not create tension between, you know, I like the Raiders and I like that, right? And so the, the recommended, recommended changes are very small. But we are going to be doing some work with our school sites to make sure that we're putting some more consistency in place related to how we're enforcing that at school sites. So, just wanted to share that.
So I have a question. In regards to the whole abdomen thing, you said generally you have skin shows. Is there like a guideline we're going to give the scores? And I just, I, is there a guy, because I don't want LHS doing this, and Tobleridge doing that.
So we're back to that, yes, we're going to calibrate on that. And so that'll be some of the stuff moving forward, and thankfully, it's cold right now, so we have a little bit of time. But, but, you know, we don't want bare abdomens, right? Like, and so it's, we'll have some conversation, and it probably won't be like, oh, three fingers. It's, it's going to be, and, and a lot of it's going to fall on admin. Because if we're not disrupting instructional time to address dress code issues, then admin needs to manage it outside of the instructional time. And if teachers notice something that's concerning, then they, we're going to come up with a process where they would notify an administrator, and then an administrator might call a kid during a passing period or ask to see them, you know, or find them during lunch or something, and determine and decide, right? So, and it will ultimately kind of be up to the, the admin to decide whether or not it does or doesn't, and not dependent on individual teacher comfort tools and those types of things. So, and it eliminates the disruption of classroom tech because they need to be in class.
That's a good point.
Yeah. And then I see the hat and caps are crossed out. Does that mean we're not allowing any caps?
No, means that we would allow them indoors. Right now, based on the AR, we don't allow them indoors. At all.
And I thought that the main reason we had the hat or the covering was because of the hair implosion.
Right, and, and it's part of our, right, I mean, and older traditions in terms of kind of that respect for, right, is that you don't wear hats indoors.
Yeah.
And, and certainly, if the board wants to keep that, we can enforce it at our school sites. But we're, we haven't necessarily, I mean, hats need to be removed when you say the pledge. Like that, that is absolutely, and so that would be an expectation when we do the pledge on a daily basis. But in terms of having hats off indoors, period. They, they didn't feel strongly that that was something that we needed to do.
Do you need a vote on the policy?
Well, you'll take action on all the ones that are here.
So do we want to amend the policy to preclude, to, to remove hats indoors again? Or do we like it as it's written?
No, because one, I think it'll be a distraction if they have to worry about it. But two, those that respect the. But two, those that respect the flag and them take their hats off.
Okay. So.
I mean, just like being at a parade.
Yeah.
There's people that don't take their hats off when the flag passes and there's everybody else.
So if we're going to allow hats, are we going to allow only certain, are we allowing?
That would be the, so that'll be the aspect where I'll work with sites on that. So it's just, it's, it's the board saying we're not going to set a blanket expectation that there's no hats at all out indoors. But now there's the aspect of like, okay, there's no hats. Basically, hats are allowed. But what are we doing to ensure that school activities are not being disrupted because kids are battling each other related to, you know, Raiders, Niners, you know, those types?
Yeah, or things that should not be on clothes.
Or, right, and that's, and that's embedded and have to be included. Like if a, if there was a marijuana leaf, for example, that would be inappropriate to be.
So it's just there one Raiders that are.
No, there's other things, but I, you know, like, yeah.
If I may, I don't know.
Yes, you absolutely can.
Rather than my own, the personal experience, hats have never been like a distraction. Like, and even with like sports stuff, I think like people are allowed to wear jerseys at school. I don't see why like hats would be different. And in terms of like addressing the flag, like I don't know if it's not like to take it off, but also like you have to like recognize it's like freedom of speech, freedom of expression. Like we can't like specifically say that they have to take it off. That like goes against.
Thoughts?
Good feedback. So it sounds like we do not need to change the verbiage. We're going to allow hats indoors and allow, decide administrators to decide how that's.
Well, you need to change the verbiage in that you're going to approve it.
Approved.
No, no, I'm saying, as it's stated.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We've removed the requirement to not have, it's a lot of double digits. So it used to be no hats, now we're saying hats are fine. But that also allows for administrators to do what's necessary in construction. So I don't think I hear any need to make any changes. So is this a roll call, or is this just a regular vote, right? Now, okay, so I'll go ahead and take a motion then to approve.
I'll move to approve second.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.[1717.02]